Two thousand twenty-two, it's six oh one P M. Board member will call.
Angie Rawling.
Bob Jarvis.
Mike Gardner. Approval of agenda. Public comment, approval of the minutes, December eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Accounts payable twelve-ten, accounts payable. Twelve sixteen, twelve seventeen, twelve twenty-three, twelve sixteen, twelve twenty-three payroll. Uh correspondence, we are going to strike number eight, the Vorac update. Um possible ballot article preliminary discussion, budget preliminary discussion executive for personnel. Which will have no action. All business, public comment and adjourn. Uh any more discussion, all those in favor? I'd like to open up for public comment, Hannah, please.
Oh, and while we're opening that up, just want to mention that Brian did let us know that he's not here because he's ill.
Oh, thank you, Bob, that is, that is correct.
Can I uh say something really quick, is there anybody? Um I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank uh three of our panel town businesses. Village Market Winchester Store and Dryer State Line Beer and Wine um for their generosity and donating gifts. For our holiday party today.
Which by the way was a great success, it was, it was a great success, so. I think we had um probably ninety-five or more percent attendance.
You're only missing um four people.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was very well attended and um it was kind of nice to see. And hopefully we make this an annual.
First, first annual.
That's right, and I'd like to continue that, so, so that's for future boards, it's a little challenge. Any other public comment, Hannah? Uh pool of minutes, December eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections on the minutes? Perfect, all those in favor? Warrants, counts payable twelve-ten, ballot article animal shelter, fourteen thousand nine dollars and ten cents.
Okay, can I explain what that is a little?
Absolutely.
Um that is what was remaining after the purchase of the kennel, there are still expenses related to the kennel, but to make it sort of a clean. To make it cleaner and more understandable in the books, when we wrote the uh rest of the checks for ballot articles. We wrote basically a check to the town panel just to move it into the um general fund.
But we can just motion that in there, correct, because they already, the, the towns already approved that money.
Right, it's already been approved to spend on the kennel and we still are spending it on the kennel, it's just. At this time of year, we always do all the ballot articles.
So moved.
Second.
Any more questions, any more discussion, all those in favor? Accounts payable twelve sixteen, twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? All of them fair? Accounts payable twelve seventeen, nine thousand one hundred dollars, that's for the PV one upgrade um. Uh for wastewater.
So moved.
Home station. Any questions, comments? Uh all those in favor? Uh I, I have one comment and I believe we're still um right on target for our, our budget and um. Um the, the timing, I think, is really right, right exactly where we expected it to be.
And that um that expense was actually from the fall. But we were waiting on W nine, so we couldn't pay and we just got that, so that's why it's.
Okay.
I thought this was like closer last, one of the last ones, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're very, like I said, I think we're right on target with the whole project, which is really great news. Payroll twelve sixteen twenty-two, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but did we all say aye? Did we vote on it, uh we have? I don't remember.
Um maybe not, so. Accounts payable twelve twenty-three, no, thank you, Ange.
You're welcome.
Uh accounts payable twelve twenty-three, forty-five thousand six ninety-one nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Um any more discussion, all those in favor? Even if we have redone that, thank you, oh thank you, thank you.
I don't, I don't think we were.
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
That's a great catch, thank you, the wrong day. Um payroll twelve sixteen, we did that. Um payroll twelve twenty-three, thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Wait a minute.
Hang on, we didn't. Payrolls yet.
Payroll, huh?
And I need to know which one I'm in.
I'm jumping ahead of myself.
Would have to be, right, yeah, okay, alright.
Payroll twelve sixteen, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Any questions, discussion, all those in favor?
Were you a little bit stained?
Yeah, I'm in it.
I'm in it too, that means without Brian, we can't.
Well, actually, you both can take and say aye for the other, I thought it was.
You can, but. Found out we. Hold it till next week. There should, there should still be three.
I understand.
Yeah, I think you can sign for each other, but they're supposed to.
Yeah, you should still be three, okay, but we'll put that on for next week.
Yeah.
We'll just hold it for the next week.
Table, payroll. For that. Twelve sixteen.
Twelve sixteen or twelve?
Twelve sixteen.
Okay.
Payroll twelve, we're having a lot of trouble with these.
We are, Chris' brain is a thing.
Payroll twelve twenty-three, thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion, are we able to approve this one?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to rescind approval on twelve sixteen.
Second.
Able to per.
Motion to rescind approval on twelve sixteen, amount of fourteen thousand three fifty-two eighty-six. I have a second, any discussion, questions, comments, all those in favor?
Just wanna be.
Good idea, Jamie.
And in case it's confusing, I'll just say it for the camera, is uh uh two of us are in that and there's only four of us here. That's why we're not approving it, it will be approved at the next meeting.
When we have a quorum.
When we have a quorum.
That's right, which the next meeting probably is not next week, it's probably after the new year. Yep, which is fine, it'll be approved. There's no problem with it, it's just we have, we're missing a person to approve it.
Ethnicity.
Ethnicity. Uh perfect, moving right on to correspondence, number seven, I think we have a couple of things there.
Yes, we do, and I'm feeling really off my meeting today, so I stuttered.
Ah, we're good.
Okay, so the first one is from Parks and Rec is she's uh Jennifer Boucher is just seeking your approval. To post this on our Facebook and website, um as part of the grant, I believe we have to share some of this messaging. Um and some of it is just announcing the grant, so. Parks and Rec is excited to announce that it has been awarded ten thousand dollar partnership for success grant from the collaborative. For the enhancements to Center Street Park and State Park, we look forward to the implementing these improvements in two thousand twenty-three. The purpose of the partnership for success grant is to enhance substance abuse prevention on a local level. Our grant application outlined how Center Street Park and State Park is an important common asset to help to. Sustain a healthy community by providing a gathering place for a wide, uh. Wide range of residents to meet, recreate and share experiences. As part of the grant, we will also be sharing messages periodically via Facebook and the town website on a range of topics. In support of substance-free youth and healthy families and individuals. Every day is Safe Medicine Disposal Day, so this is one of the messages. Dear parts safely disclose of unwanted medications and increase the health and wellness of the community. Year-round permanent and anonymous disposal locations are Bennington County, this uh hospital, Southwest, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center. Bennington Police, Bennington County Sheriff's Department, Manchester Police, Wind Hall Police, The Pharmacy Inc. and Pharmacy of North Shore.
Anybody have any comments on that, I think.
Did we need a motion to put that on the website, is that what?
Um yeah, um yeah, because we just like to get.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we uh uh put the relevant parts of that message onto the website.
Second.
Any more discussion? Um one thing I'd like to say about the Parks and Rec and, and moving forward with, with um. Projects like this, um it's, it's a well-known fact that every community. Um I'm sure every community in the, in the United States needs things like this. For substance abuse and that kind of stuff, and if we can make the difference in one or two or however many people, it's, it's money well spent, so. Um I'm excited that, that they're into that kind of stuff, so.
I don't.
Thank you for the Parks and, thank you to the Parks and Rec, I can't talk in your chair, uh thank you to the Parks and Rec for, for researching and, and taking care of this kind of thing.
I personally don't think there's any issue with our subcommittees asking to have stuff, especially community-minded items. Um to be posted on our website or our official.
No, but I think it's nice that they ask and, you know.
Yes.
Then we get it out there, no, for sure. Uh I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, all those in favor? It's okay.
Okay, this one is gonna be a mouthful. I have a letter from Jenna, Jenna Caslin, uh she is the executive director of the Bennington County Child Advocacy Center. Greetings panel selector, the Bennington County Child Advocacy Center and Special Investigation Unit is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization serving Bennington County. We provide supports and services for children and non-offending family members going through child abuse investigations and adult who have experienced sexual violence. Our vision is that all children in Bennington County will be safe and live in a thriving community where families are strengthened, victims heal from their trauma. And offenders are held accountable. April is unique to our office as it is both Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We use this month as an opportunity to help wa- raise awareness throughout Bennington County on both topics. One way we do this is a virtual display of T-shirts created by survivors and loved ones of survivors that travel throughout Bennington County during the month. We set this display up in various public areas allowing community members to bear witness to this powerful display. This display has traveled throughout the county for around five years now in each, on, in each April. Primarily at various locations in the town of Bennington, but in recent years expanding into North Bennington, Arlington and Manchester. We would love to have the town panel host this display for a couple of days during the month. The only thing we would need is public space with a couple of trees we can tie the clotheslines to. Our staff set up the display and take the display down, leaving no sign of the display when it's gone. If you are curious to see what the display looks like, to make your decision allowing it to come to panel, you can visit our website. Um it's W W dot B C C A C dot org slash the clothesline project. If you should have any questions, please feel free to contact me, she shares her contact information. I, I personally have seen the display in Bennington, it is, it is powerful. Um and I, I believe it's a very important topic that affects many people in town.
And I agree with you, but we, do we even have any trees?
My first thought when, my, couple thoughts, first thought was. Um my opinion is absolutely support this group. Plain and simple. My second thought was, um if we could use the um Center Street Park. It's some, you know, somewhere down here, um you know, they have the parking, they have, you know, the, it's kind of easy access, you know. April can be a little bit muddy, you know, if, if we were to say use the Little League Field or, or something like that.
Tree use a position.
That, that's right, you know, if, if somehow they could use Center Street Park. Um and I'm sure that Parks and Rec, this would kind of go along with everything that they're striving for. Um but I, I think we should maybe reach out to, to Jennifer. Um Boucher and just make sure, but I, I'm positive, I don't want to speak for her, but this is kind of the same.
Yeah, I'm sure that she would be.
Uh can we get that website again?
B C C A C dot org slash the.
The clothesline?
Get it to you, the way that it, Stephen's going along, stashes in it, yeah.
Oh, alright, it's the dash clothesline dash project.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, the pulse of the shade around.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how big they're, I don't, I've, I've never seen their display, but I would think that there's.
There's probably plenty.
Probably some space down there that they could make work.
Right, and I, I will um definitely, if you guys are game for it, I'll just connect her with Jennifer and.
Yeah, I have no problem with it, I think it's a great idea.
Uh I think it's a great idea too, I think we ought to take a look at it first before we approve it. Uh just, I mean, uh um the only thing I'm concerned about is, is, is there some sort of advocacy for any other groups and that sort of thing? We, we ought to know that before we vote on it. Uh uh of course, I'm in, in full support, but um but just, just that we ought to, we ought to look at it first.
When do they need an answer, my?
Uh well, it's not until April.
I'm sure she wants to try to plan ahead, which sounds like.
I mean, by next meeting is probably.
So we could bring this back to our next meeting, so let's put that on our agenda for, we'll use it as an agenda item. On our first meeting in January and that will give everyone time to. Um look at the website and make sure that, I'm sure it's not offensive, but I think I agree with Bob that we, you know, prob- in today's world. But I, I do believe this board is in full support of, of their program and, and I'm sure there's not gonna be a problem at all. Plus it'll give us, it'll give the time to contact with Jennifer Boucher, Parks and Rec and, and you know, align there as well.
Definitely.
Do we have any alternate correspondence? Uh we have taken the Vorac update out of here. Um the reason, the reason, the reason that we, we removed that is there was not a lot of new information. Um out of this time, we're, it's, we're working on a couple of things, we're working on a bunch of things actually, um. With the Vorac update and the bridge, but um there's nothing really new, so we didn't want to waste a lot of time. So we're gonna move into possible ballot article preliminary discussion.
So that is just that, um I've been working a lot on getting ballot article appropriations and town report stuff. And I just, I didn't know if any of you had specific things that you were going to be looking to put on the ballot. Cause it is definitely time to start thinking about.
I, I think there's, I think there's a couple of things that, that we need to have, um some discussion about for sure as a board. Um couple of things that I definitely want to have some discussion about, um a- as a board. Um but I'm not prepared to talk about them early tonight. Um what I, and I thought about this, um. I've thought about it some because we've had some, since I've been sitting on the board in, in my third year. We've had some discussion, some questions, some comments, not a lot, but some from. From board members. We've had it from um board members as taxpayers and from taxpayers in general. Questioning some of the ballot articles, the, the um organizations that are requesting money. So I'd like, I'd like for us to think about. Actually, the best way to put it, I'd like for the board to think about what we would like to see when an organization comes in. And just request a certain amount of money, would we like a little bit of an explanation? Um and I know it's gonna draw things out a little bit and make, it could make meetings a little bit longer, but.
I do, they do provide that information to me, it was. They quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um they, they send out, yeah, I send out a form and they fill out the form and they're asking for more, they have to go for signatures, like a hundred and fifty signatures. Um which the library has decided to try to do that. Um they're the only ones, I've gotten everybody else's back, they'd asked just for the same amount, but they just kind of say. What they do, um what they do with the money, what they did with it last year, and they um kind of describe their budget briefly. Um and then they also send a letter of support to put in the town report that many of them were not included last year. Um but.
And I, and I understand that, I, I, I do, I think from my standpoint, Tara, I. I'd like to see a little bit of an explanation. From each and every organization that does receive money from the town, of what they're doing with it, and I know most of them do. I'd like to see it from all of them, because, because I, I just, it's just, and maybe it's just me, but I don't think it is, I've heard from. I've heard from a, and I'm not saying they're wasting their money, I just would like to see an explanation.
Is it, do you think it's partially that people don't maybe not understand what that agency in particular does?
I think there's multiple things, I think that's one, yeah, I think that's one, sure. Sure.
I think that between that and then. Um the other thing people don't understand is how much. Um if you pass all those separate articles, that raises your tax rate. Cause that's something that's always eh been asked.
I think Bob, Bob leaving last year tried.
Yeah, I mean.
That, oh, an adamant point, Bob, Bob worked really hard on that last year, if I remember correctly.
Tried a few years, he said he was in that message. Because people are always, oh, you guys said this was what the tax rate should have been, well, no, that's what our town budget is. Once you vote and you include all this, that adds that, which increases it.
I forgot what the percentage was, but it was a, uh and he just, you know, he didn't really work all that hard, it was a matter of. Adding up all the ballot articles and coming and comparing it to our, our general fund.
But you started, you started some time on it, for sure.
It was a, it was forty, uh I, I'm going from memory, it was something like forty percent of our total budget, but I could be off, it might have been thirty. But it was, it was substantial and it's um, the, the problem, the problem that I see is that. Each individual item sounds really good, but in aggregate, it, it, there's a, there's a pain point. It actually hurts your citizens, it hurts our economy, it hurts our ability to grow, there's, there's, anything you pay for. Uh yeah, you pay for.
Right.
Um and so I, I think we need to be careful about it, and then to your point, Mike, I really like the idea of, of getting more information from, from those who want to put those out. Because we have, we have some uh leeway on some of the ballot articles, others are, if you get the signatures, you're on the ballot, right? Uh we have no control over that, but some of the stuff that we have control over, a lot of times, we, we as a board say things like, let the voters decide. But as soon as we decide to put it on the ballot, it has an implicit endorsement of the board. And we have to be careful about what we're implicitly endorsing as well as e- explicitly endorsing, but um.
Could we put in the town report the total amount of the ballot articles?
That would be a really good idea, I think, and a percentage of the general fund that it represents.
I also think education on the ballot articles, like you're saying, is really important. But not just those ballot articles, but even the ones that you guys come up with, if you. They just are sharing both sides of it or, you know what I mean, factual.
I think, I think you're absolutely right.
But just educating people why you're making those decisions.
I, I think.
Because they're, they're, I voted on things that I wasn't really clear on. What the end result was going to be in the past, so.
Well, I think a lot of people do and, and I, and I think, you know, because, because um. People aren't, aren't thoroughly educated on what the ballot article is, I think that's by a great term to use. We just, and tha- and that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for people to have that education before they vote. And, and I think it's our due diligence, as, as Bob said, to look at these things. And I also think that if we come up with some ballot articles that we're looking for here as a board. I don't think we just leave it to word of mouth, so to speak, I think.
The ballot.
Or, that's right, or the word, or the, of the article.
Sometimes I get confused.
Maybe we write a paragraph.
Ex- exactly, Bob, that's exactly, you know, say, hey, look at, this is why we're looking to do X.
Yep.
This is what we think is better for the town, this is why we think it's better for the town.
Right. And town report, it can be discussed at town meeting, it can be shared educationally before even.
Right, that's generally what we've attempted to do in the past, if it's something that the board has put out.
I think we've failed.
I have a good example, like the appointed versus elected, that has failed numerous times, I don't think people understand why.
That's right. So I, I think, I think, you know, it's something I've been giving some thought for, 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 ever since last year, actually, for a year now. And I think, I think it's, you know, something that we should, we, maybe, maybe we change things, maybe we don't do it the way that it's always been done, maybe, maybe we're the board that makes that change. And said, hey, this is what we're looking for, maybe, you know, not, we're not trying to be the bad guy, but we're just trying to say, we're trying to give our, our constituents and our taxpayers. Um a little more education on what they're voting on. And, and if they still voted in, that's their choice, that's their choice.
We, we've done due diligence.
That's right. Perfect, any more discussion on that? Do we want to set up, I don't think we need to set up a meeting, any, any meetings for, for that kind of stuff, right?
I think when we get, uh, we start wording the town, we, we might do special meetings, cause we're gonna have special meetings also to do the budget.
I think we'll have, I think we'll, we'll have some special, we'll have some special meetings for, um, you know. Some ballot articles, if we want to put some ballot articles, I think, I think, and I think having a special meeting unfortunately, I think is a better idea than trying to. Trying to cram it into.
Right.
One of our board meetings where we're running the town, so to speak.
I agree, uh that's.
Yeah, we just specifically, okay, we have a ballot article on, on appointed versus an elected, for example. You're kind of stealing your idea, your words, um you know, and we have, just have a special meeting on just that. And so we spend an hour or whatever we spend, rather than try to throw it in on fifteen minutes on, on a regular board meeting night.
Well, Jamie just said, uh pros and cons, so we, we, we will try not to take a position. We'll try to say, this is why we put it on here, but here's the, here is the counter view and try to be as, as even-handed about the counter view as well.
Well, I think that's all we need to do, for sure. Perfect, um budget preliminary discussion. That's you.
Yeah, so basically the same thing, um I know last, so in July, I did the um wage increases with you guys. But I wasn't here when all the budgeting happened, I think Tim or Megan, whoever, budgeted with you guys, so. Um I just didn't know if there was anything you're looking ahead at, like road, do you want to get them up a little higher with wages?
Joel will come in with his.
Yeah.
Recommendation.
I know, but then you guys had said we want to do across the board, is that still the goal?
Across the board what?
Like if road goes with a five percent.
Oh, you're still talking about wage increases, okay, okay.
Well, each, each department turns in their budget and um then we work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on the budget currently, so I can either do it at three percent, I could do it at four percent. It's just easier if I know when I'm doing it initially instead of.
Have you, have you had any discussion with Joel or Darcy or Tom on wage increases?
Joel, yes, um he's thinking five and um Tom will be, I assumed about, I think he assumed three, I went with four.
For Tom.
Right, yeah.
I'll say, when we have those special meetings to do that, we want to make sure we include Ellen in there.
Oh yeah, I, I haven't done any budgeting without Ellen.
No, I'm just saying, I just.
That doesn't happen, cause yeah.
We start getting away a little bit.
She definitely understands it really well.
I think we, I personally lean towards the um across the board, I'm talking about wages.
Correct.
You know, employee wages, I'm, I'm, I'm an across the board kind of a person.
Just keep.
Coming up with a, you know, an, an agreed upon number from the board, you know. Just throwing that part out there, but I also think we should, we should just discuss that on. Openly and, and, but I, I kind of want to hear from our department heads, what they're looking at.
And Darcy doesn't, doesn't budget at the same time, that's the other, that's the other kick, cause she budgets later. Cause her budget is completely separate and based on.
And, and measures, yeah.
So, but it's just, I just want us to start thinking budget-wise and what your thoughts are before we even get into the new year. Because then we're gonna be really pounding it out.
So right, so one of the things we need to be, we need to consider and it's uh, um I, I agree with the across the board. Um we need to do something to, 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 uh well, annual increases and, and whatnot. Um the, but the other side is we need to challenge our department heads to find other areas to cut. If we're gonna be paying more, we have to be thinking about the taxpayer and, and trying to. If we're gonna be paying more, we have to be thinking about the taxpayer and and trying to, trying to see if we can do more with less. Um, uh, you know, uh, whether it's a capital expenditure or what, how much we're putting down for uh, whatever the other, whatever the other items are, we really need to challenge all of our department heads to to find areas to cut. Um, uh, uh, otherwise, we're just growing.
I think something.
We are growing, but we gotta, we gotta, some of it's economy-driven, that we gotta pay attention to.
I think, I think one thing, Tara, that that I think might might move things along a little bit quicker, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, is if we were to have um, at least for me, if I were to have figures in front of me, uh, and this goes right to directly to wages, uh, of three percent, four percent, five percent, six percent across the board, you know, and may, I really don't need all of it. Maybe we need a four, five, and six or whatever percent increase across the board type thing. You know, once, once you get the, once you get the base number, it's not a huge.
Right.
Problem to figure that out, but if we have that in front of us.
Right.
It it visually, it's gonna help me, that's for sure.
Are there other areas in the budget that would be helpful to break down farther than just like that with the wages and you show the difference in the number? Are there other areas you can think of off off the top of your head?
Well, I think, I think from my experience in in the three years, having, having two years and then this year too. Uh, I think our department heads come in with a pretty broken-down budget, y- you know, um.
Tom and I, uh, Tom and I decided to go up ten dollars on tournaments. Um, so that is, and that'll be in his budget.
Hmm. So I think, you know, I I think they do a really good job breaking it down for us, all three of them. Um, I think, I think Alan last year was, the budget stuff was pretty easy to understand, and I think if we had a question, it was pretty easy to get the answer.
Mm-hmm.
From if, if my recollection was correct.
New format was.
The new format was much better.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't, I can't really pinpoint anything from my perspective.
Which format did she use? Just so, was it a sp- a spreadsheet on one sheet or was it? I have it in my office, but was it like each line item and then it shows you what it was last year?
Yes.
Yes, and what we've actually spent this year, and then there's a blank, or what we've filled in on the end.
Right. And I I just, I think, you know, the format we used last year was pretty, was pretty straightforward, pretty easy to understand, and we could get our questions answered fairly rapidly.
Yeah.
And and I think that's key when we're doing this, because last year's budget session seemed fairly painless.
They were painless. Yeah, I think this year will be.
I I do too.
It's just those my, those certain things like wages that are a little hard to figure out. Yep.
Any more discussion on budget? You good with that?
Yeah, lots of, lots of work in January.
Yeah. Yeah.
And ballot.
So, um, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session with no action taken afterwards for personnel. And this should be very quick, um, matter of a few minutes, I'm sure.
Salute.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recording in progress.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there is no action to be taken. Sorry, it took a little longer than I anticipated. Uh, any old business? No business. We'll move into public comment, please, here.
Hi, guys. I'm not sure if she didn't say anything, but I I think the one form you're looking for for the ballot article organizations is, um, the IRS Form nine ninety. Um, it gives them, uh, it gives a recap of what the, um, organizations, a lot of them are nonprofit organizations, that have to fill out, um, what their revenues are and what their expenses are. And basically what kind of, um, activities they have, so I just wanted to fill that in and maybe Tara, you can just kind of look that up and, um.
Yep.
Have a great day.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here?
Yeah, Mindy Jo.
Hey, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
That's all I wanted. Merry Christmas, you guys.
Thank you.
This storm and a lot of snow and wind, okay, guys?
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Mindy Jo.
That's it, here. No more public comment? Okay, uh, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Um, it's been an interesting two thousand and twenty-two, to say the least, and, um, we'll have a, uh, this is our last meeting for two thousand twenty-two, and we'll move on to twenty twenty-three and see what happens.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.